Here, we always appreciate the participation from citizens and staff and law enforcement. So this time, I will call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners Work Session to order this November the ninth of 2021. And if you'd bring, if the marshal bring the list forward, so we know if anyone wishes to speak, be a good time to turn off your phone if you've got it still on. Thank you so much. And we're, it's always a joy to have Pastor Johnny McBurroughs from Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church in our presence, and he is going to bring us words of wisdom, lead us in vacation, and then we'll pledge the flag under his guidance. Thank you, Johnny. Stand if you're able.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the Board and the citizens of Paulding County. Let us pray. Our great God and Savior, we come again in the name of Christ our Savior. Lord God, we thank you for this day, for the many blessings we enjoy in this great nation. Lord God, as we remember those men and women who served in these armed forces of these United States of America, we pray now for them, our veterans, we pray for our police officers, and all of our leaders in this great state and this great country. Now, Lord God, we pray that you give them wisdom to do those things that are pleasing in your sight, for you say, whatever we do in works or deeds, do it all to the glory of God. Let their work glorify you, that the citizens of Paulding County will be blessed by this Board of Commissioners. And we give you the praise, we give you the glory. We ask this all, in the wonderful name of the Savior we pray. Amen.
Pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Pastor McBurroughs. Always a joy to have you here. The October 26, 2021 Work Session Minutes and the October 26, 2021 Board Meeting Minutes are available for review. Our Team Paulding segment this morning is on the Employee of the Month, Ms. Tina Godsey with the Superior Court. Let's enjoy this one.
I'm the Chief Deputy Clerk for Paulding County Superior Court Clerk's Office, and I have been employed with Paulding County for 24 years. The Civil Department, we deal with a lot of temporary protective orders, and Tina is that first stop. She has a lot of empathy for the public. She greets them with a smile. They leave nine times out of 10 feeling a little better about the situation that they may be in, because our situations in this office deal with a lot of emotion. She never has an unkind word. It's almost like she can put herself in that position with the public, empathize with them, walk in their shoes, and get to as good of an outcome as what she can. Tina's always getting compliments. We've received cards, letters, phone calls, and when you see that person within the office go above and beyond, and it's recognized by her coworkers, but you just kind of have that Tina needs to be the Employee of the Month. Never seen her where she is not willing to help anybody in the office. She's an excellent coworker, gets along well with everybody. As a whole, Sheila talked with coworkers. Everyone agreed that she was their nominee and submitted the paperwork. It felt good about it, and here we are.
Congratulations, Tina. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Deputy Bryce Brott with the Paulding County Sheriff's Office, and Sheriff Gullidge is going to tell us a little bit more about this award.
Good morning, guys and ladies here. Y'all today, if you want to stand up front for us, we'll try not to embarrass you much. I'd like to introduce y'all to Deputy Brott. He came to us from another agency. He's been at the sheriff's office since September of 2019, I think I'm correct. Is that right? He's proven to be instrumental in our patrol division. When we switched over to this Tyler reporting system, everybody over there was about ready to pull their hair out and shoot theirself. Well, luckily, he had already been using this system, so he was one of our go-to guys. He was familiar how to navigate the system. If any of our deputies or really anybody over there had a question or issues there, he was always there to help, even on his off days. He's just a phone call away. Deputy Brott has served his country, also is a United States Marine in his community. He's a valuable asset to the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. He's another one of those deputies that all you got to do is give him the equipment he needs and get out of his way and let him go do his job. He's been a tremendous asset to us, and I'm proud to have him on our team. If y'all would join me in congratulating Deputy Brott. And also, I'd like to thank Texas Roadhouse, because they're going to give you a dinner for two, so as soon as we can get dinner and get it, we'll get it back to you. If you don't got nobody, go with y'all, go with you and eat.
Deputy Brott, I have a certification signed by all the board. I'll just bring it to you in your office. I didn't get in here with it. It may be a little out of order, but our clerk went and retrieved this out of my office, so Public Safety Appreciation Award presented to Bruce Brott, recognition of outstanding service to his community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners this ninth day of November 2021. And I'm going to hold on to it for a little longer, because we need to get a couple more signatures on it.
Congratulations.
Well, Baker Street, I thought you were going to be Superman and disappear from the panel. Is Tim not here?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a text. I understand he's on the way, so if we could hold that until a little bit later in the meeting, that would be great. I appreciate that.
Sure. We're so flexible, we're fluid, right? Next, I'd like to call on Commissioner Caker, Sandy Caker, to present an award that is kind of a surprise award, so I'm not going to say anymore.
This award goes to Lori Ashmore. This is in honor of our Richmond Creek Resort Award, which she worked diligently to get us through it. We've had a lot of ups and downs, weather mostly, but we did get through it, and with now that it's up and going, and I just want to present this to you.
You want to do a picture?
Thank you, Lori, for what you did.
Thank you.
Laura, let me see the picture.
Thank you, Lori. We have no invited guests this morning under bid awards. Item number two is to award the State courtroom number one Millbrook package. However, we've got, we're really flexible this morning. I want to call on the county administrator to explain why we're going to actually put that on next month's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I met with Scott Green this morning and had some discussions with him. Staff's not quite ready to make a recommendation at this point, so we'd ask that this be moved to the next meeting for your consideration at that time. We're still working on a couple of issues with it, but we're just not ready to make that recommendation.
So you're doing some of the millwork, and that's made it go slower?
Well, if I was doing the millwork, it would never get done.
Understand, and we'll look forward to it being on the December 14th agenda. Reports from committees and departments, I always look forward to Sheriff Gullidge's report, so this is the month we get the update, so we'll get you at the podium again, Gary.
Thank y'all once again. I'll try to be short and sweet as I can. Nice to know Stover's off vacation today. We'll have to put up with him today. If y'all would allow me, I'd like to say, it's been, we got through another budget year, and I want to personally thank Tabitha Pollard again for her and her office. They're fantastic folks. I don't know what this county would do without her and her staff, so kudos to you, Tabitha, and thank you for always taking our calls. I wouldn't blame you if you never answered a call and Mary Chegg calls you again, but I want to publicly thank you for all your hard work and what you do for us. We appreciate you. The sheriff's report is from January through September 2021. We patrol 1,987,380 miles. Total arrested was 1,815. Also give y'all a packet with all these numbers. Any time as you're sitting around your board, you've got plenty to read, so tells you kind of what we do. We handled 37,227 complaints. Our high-volume calls was 3,249 alarms, 3,788 domestics. We served 5,330 civil papers and subpoenas, handled 2,681 suspicious incidents, persons and vehicles, had 1,611 Thelpa takens, burglaries, and entering autos. We performed 4,135 traffic stops, 92 DUIs. We had 2,432 warrants that we cleared, conducted 483 zone patrols, and we had 1,032 juvenile incident reports. 607, two of those were assigned, and 278 were charged. The detention center booked in 1,560 during these months with an average population of 150. Our transport division made 1,160 adult and 20 juvenile transports during this time in month. That's about all I got. Like I said, I give y'all a book with the numbers for everything we do in it. COVID's got us down on our numbers in a jail, and that's a good thing with this new facility. We've actually had room to be able to control what we've got and keep people quarantined and keep them away from each other. We've been extremely fortunate. If we'd been in another place, I don't know what we'd done. Well, we'd have been in trouble. I just don't know how much trouble we would have been in, but luckily, with this new facility, we can keep people quarantined, so we've had luck with all that, so with that, I'll leave y'all alone. I appreciate y'all's time.
You take a question just on manpower?
I will.
Are we low just a little bit, or?
No, we're, we will take one step forward, two steps back. We're down probably numbers 50, you know what we're down manpower-wise?
It's typically around 57, sir.
57, so I'm at 50. I can't keep up, but they come and go, and we're losing them to people that pay in more and got better retirement and better benefits. So as all y'all know, we talk to y'all pretty regularly, but it's something we're going to have to work on. I don't know that, I don't know what the fix for it is. I will say that the media has not done us any favors in the last couple of years. Luckily, in Paulding County, the citizens here support us wholeheartedly. We don't have a lot of the problems that you see on the news, and I thank God for that, but the counties around us are having issues, we're having issues. Everybody's throwing, continuing to throw money at it. I know Douglas County's just put out a flyer that they're fixing up a lot of their benefits. We'll kind of see what it does, but as most of y'all will come, it's no surprise, we'll be, we have been in, we'll be after y'all again for help, so I don't know what the answer to it is, Dave.
Well, let's get face to face, get all the commissioners informed, and we'll move forward.
That's one thing that I'm extremely proud about. None of us has been throwing punches at each other ever since I've been the sheriff. We've had good luck dealing with y'all. We've had a lot of meetings with individuals, individually with y'all, and, you know, we can't meet with more than two of you at times, so it's kind of aggravating sometimes, but I thank y'all for always opening your ears and listening to us. I know several of y'all have come over and did ride-alongs with us. You know what we're doing, you know what we got. We're not asking for anything other than just trying to take care of our folks, and we appreciate any support we can get from y'all. And I will say that this board probably gives us as much or more support than any board that I've ever worked under, and I appreciate y'all for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
My pleasure.
So we're going to put it in reverse and jump back up to a Ride for Wishes presentation. So you got the floor, Baker Street?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have Tim Merly from Make-A-Wish Georgia come up with me, and Felicia, can you come up? So I hope I get the date right, October 9th? Bad with dates, I apologize. Felicia's only told me like 10 times this morning and wrote it down for me, too, so. But on October 9th, we had our annual Ride for Wishes, and we've got Tim Merly from Make-A-Wish Foundation here. We want to present a check this morning for $14,045.61. I'm going to go ahead and give that to you. I'm going to let you speak in a minute, but that is the entire proceeds, everything after we paid any of the expenses, the entire 100% of the proceeds. So really pleased, especially during this pandemic. So I'm sure you'd like to say some things. We'd love to have you.
Thanks, Frank. Mainly, I just want to say thank you to everyone in Paulding County. So this is the fourth year that we've done this ride, and we currently have 25 kids in Paulding right now that are waiting for a wish. And the last year and a half now with COVID, it's been tough for us. So we're a national brand, but we're a local organization, so we raise money just for Georgia kids, and we haven't been able to grant as many wishes in the last 18 months, mainly because we couldn't do all the things we would normally do, travel, large gatherings. As things start to open up, we're opening up more as well. So we were able to continue. We didn't stop granting wishes. We still did four for Paulding County kids, and we're able to do that because of events like this, and because of all of you coming out and supporting it. So even last year, we had bad weather, we were in the heart of COVID, a lot of people came out. This year, even more people came out, raised a little bit more money, and it's fantastic. So we've got, already have five kids on the schedule in the coming year, so we're already ahead of where we were, and I look to see that grow. We've got one young woman. If you haven't seen any national coverage on that, you probably will at some point in the next calendar year, so be on the lookout for that as well. So thank you guys so much.
We'll take a picture in just a minute, but just to let everyone know, this is a staff project. This is a project that all the employees help with, and we had some really good participation this year with a lot of departments, and so it's one of those things that we, as employees and the board, give back to the community. So we're really pleased with our participation and hope we can do even more next year. So let's take a picture.
A lot of times, people will come up to myself, or Jaylee, or any of our staff, or any of our volunteers, and they'll say things like, you know, what you guys do is amazing, but it must be incredibly difficult. Or they may say, what you guys do must be self-fulfilling, but I could never do that because surely it's very, very sad. And a lot of that is true, except for the last thing. You see, it's not, it's not sad. It's hard, and it's difficult, and there are moments of sadness, but what we do is not sad. What we do is we bring hope and we bring joy to children and families who need it at a time when they need it most, and that's wish granting. And how we do wish granting is with all of you. It's with communities that rise up around their kids and make this magic happen. What you guys do here is just so special. I love coming up here and being with you guys in Paulding County. My son and I love coming to this event specifically every year. Thank you guys for everything you do. It's amazing.
I'd be remiss if I didn't tell everyone that little blond-haired girl is my youngest grandchild. Boykin, I thought you'd applaud on that one. It's a great event. I always look forward to it. So we're down to reports from committees and departments. We got Sheriff Gary Gullidge, and we're also blessed and fortunate to have Ann Lippman to bring us up to date in the community development area. Ann, thank you.
Thank you. It's always exciting for me to bring some business license and building permit data to you. It's been a roller coaster this year. This first chart shows the number of building permits that we've issued by month. We are about as thousand ahead of we were this time last year. The next slide just shows a breakdown of the type of permits, and the trend for single-family residential continues up, and we have issued right at 1,700 of those permits. Our next slide shows our inspections. Our six building inspectors continue to be busy every month. Last month was actually one of their highest months of inspections. As we drill down a little bit more into the data, this shows the breakdown by quarter of residential versus non-residential permits, and you will see that quarter one of 21 was the highest in five years. It's actually probably the highest in 10 years, and something I might bring to you next year, I'm interested to see how many of these permits actually expire. We've already seen, you might see different numbers every once in a while, and it's when I figure out that a permit has been repermitted because it actually expired. They expire if no activity, no inspections occur within one year. This next slide shows the value of construction. We are on par, even though we're a little higher than last year. We're pretty much on par as we were last year. The value of single-family is upwards of $170 million. This always, and this kind of shows, this one is a breakdown of single-family permits by post. If you remember back in March, it was when, for the first time in many months, post four was the big loser, coming in third place to post one and post two. But you can see this trend of how the single-family permits, they dipped to an all-time low. The number in July was 59, and that was the lowest number of residential permits we'd issued since 2015. And I think the trend, it looks like it's slowing down a little bit, so we all look forward to have a breather. This next slide shows the population growth that's projected by post. Post four has been the big winner in that with almost 18,000 people, which I think is probably about the population of Dallas, so we've had a whole city full of people move into post four. More exciting is the number of commercial permits that are issued by post. Post one and post three, parts of their post are in the city of Hiram, and of course, we issue their building permits, so the red is those permits in the city of Hiram. And just to highlight some of the largest permits, the second table shows the value of commercial permits. Biggest permits in post one were the U-Haul Center there on Charles Hardy Parkway and the Wellstar Medical remodel. Post two, the largest, was the Publix remodel. Post three is seeing a lot of industrial growth near the Metromont area. There's been several warehouse, an office warehouse, and a self-storage center permitted there. Post four, the two biggest projects are Rock Solid Climate Self-Control Storage and North Paulding Retail Center, which I believe are both on Seven Hills Connector. Moving on to our business licenses, we currently have 3,738 active business license. That is about 400 more than this time last year, so I think that's an exciting change. And I asked Ginny Lee, she is seeing a lot of businesses moving from other counties here, and we are seeing a significant amount of home occupations moving into a commercial location, so I think that is a good sign. And our last slide, this is new permits issued this year, and it just shows the breakdown in post, and it shows the breakdown of home-based versus commercial. And since today's theme is flexibility and fluidity, I would also like to announce, I know you all know that community development has been working on a gigantic project, a project of combining our zoning ordinance and our development ordinances into unified development ordinance, and I am pleased to announce that we will be able to, either today or tomorrow at the latest, we have a final draft of Title II zoning to present to the public. And so we will, the document will end up with five titles, administration, zoning, development, sign regulation, and towers and communications, as well as an appendix. Everything but Title III, the development, which we're still working on, we should be able to get presented by the end of the week. So tell all your friends to go check it out, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Ann. Have no one who's signed up for public participation on agenda items? Under the consent agenda, I request your patience as I'm required to read these for the archives. Item number three is actually to adopt DOT job description, I'm sorry, job classification for a right-of-way administrator. Number four is to adopt Department of Transportation job classification for engineering technician. Item five is to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with Spencer Schlamp for the mitigation of site traffic concerns on Old Data Dallas-Aquith Road and driveway accessibility along the Dallas-Aquith Highway. Item number seven is to appoint Johnny McBurroughs to the Board of Health to serve a six-year term beginning January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2027. Item number seven is to reappoint Peggy Wills to the Board of Elections to serve a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. Item number eight is to appoint Angela Jones to the Board of Elections to serve a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. Item nine is to adopt the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' proposed regular schedule, regular meeting schedule for the 2022 calendar year. And lastly, number 10 is to adopt the proposed application and public hearing dates for the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Stream Buffer Development Waiver Review Committee, and the Development Waiver Review Committee for the 2022 calendar year. Are there any post commissioners, including Commissioner Stover, who's with us on the phone, who would like to move any of these items to the regular new business? Hearing none, we'll leave them on the consent agenda and Old Testament, Old Business. Lauren, could you speak on the Old Testament portion, please?
Always welcome, if you say a few words.
Where are we if we can't laugh? Discuss action to adopt resolution 2134 authorizing the filing of an application with the Georgia Department of Transportation, the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance under Section 5311 of the federal transit laws under Chapter 53 of Title 49 of the United States Code. Ms. Pollard to report.
Good morning. This is the transit grant that basically operates our transit buses out of the senior center, and I'm going to tell you what I'm going to apply for, and then I'm going to tell you what I expect to get. So they're a little bit different. So the cost of that operation is about $234,000. We apply for half. It's a 50/50 grant, so we're applying for 117 in operation funds. I expect to get about half of that, so therefore, federal funds are about 25% of the operations, and the county funds are about 75% of the operations, even though it's 50/50 grant. And we're applying for the replacement of two of those vehicles. So two vehicles, we have a total of five vehicles. Two of those vehicles were approved in last year's grant, and we're applying for two more. Basically, the application state requirements are that once they're of a particular mileage, which is in excess of 100,000 miles, then they tell us to apply for those replacements. So the replacement buses would come at a cost of $14,463 when that time comes, and it'll be for, again, those two buses. The total application that we're applying for is $378,635.96. Of that, our federal request is $232,708.76, and I expect to receive about $174,000.
Those numbers are derived from Those numbers are derived from, from what calculations?
Several years ago, the GDOT Transit Division, we were, well, actually with the two thousand and ten census, we were switched from a rural county to an urban county, which basically just reduced our funding.
Any questions for Tavison? Thank you for that report. Item twelve this morning is discuss action to approve change order number one for Steel and Associates in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This will address additional culvert placement and bridge span increases across the existing creeks for the Burn Hickory Park Improvements Project funded through SPOLOST, your SPOLOST dollars at work, located in post four. And Mr. Alex Wilson is standing in for his boss.
Good morning. Yep, I am filling in today. So this is our current trail project at Burn Hickory Park. And after several visits with myself, Michael, and the engineer, firing the contractor, we've moved the placement of the bridges. There are four bridges crossing the creek several times, obviously. And so we've adjusted that bridge placement, which added some length to those bridges. And also, we decided to back off the creek banks a little bit. So that added footage as well. Also on this is three culverts. We've found some potential wash areas that could potentially cause some maintenance and issues on the trail in the future. So we just can go ahead and throw some culverts in there and, you know, try to stop the maintenance issues, you know, in the future. So again, it is funded through SPOLOST. It is post four. So any other questions?
Alex, do you have any estimated date for when that complete trail will be?
Hopefully about sixty to ninety days. As soon as we get the bridges going, think throw them up. Kind of the holdup right now is they can only do certain sections of the trail until they can cross, you know, the creek itself. So that's kind of, we're waiting on that. The first bridge to go in, they can take off from there.
Can you ride bikes over the bridge?
It will be, it will carry our gator that we use for our maintenance division. So it'll be able to hold that. So hopefully a bicycle will be fine on that. Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And lastly, under new business, item number thirteen is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to secure funding for the Atlanta Regional Commission, A R C, Regional Connected Vehicle Deployment Program in the amount of fifty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents, with the county providing ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-three cents in match funds. Mr. George Jones?
Morning.
Morning.
We're requesting the board to enter an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to basically supply connected vehicle, otherwise known as C V technology, at seven intersections along the county maintained intersections of Bill Carruth Parkway, starting at Rosedale Drive and going to the west to Verge Valentine Drive. A traffic signal itself is essentially run by a computer. Basically, that computer tells it the minimum green time, maximum green time, red times, yellow times. Also, there are sensors either in the air or in the roadway itself that detect vehicles. So all that information is brought back to the traffic signal itself. A little background. A connected vehicle is basically a vehicle that can communicate with other systems outside of the car itself. And in this case, this deployment will allow the traffic signal to communicate with vehicles equipped with C V technology. Basically, this is a project with safety in mind. For example, for traffic signals equipped with this technology, it can alert drivers when the traffic signals are beginning to go to a red phase. So it kind of gives them ample time to know when to slow down. It can also allow vehicles, again, equipped with this technology, to know if somebody's pushed the pedestrian push button. Also, if there's bus preemption or emergency preemption, if so equipped. So again, it's basically, it's essentially a safety facet. In the metro Atlanta area, this technology has been installed at seven hundred and fifty intersections with an additional twelve hundred and fifty program for the future. A GDOT consultant will design, install, and maintain this system for one year as part of this agreement. After that, the county will be responsible for maintenance. We're looking around seven thousand dollars a year for the maintenance of this work. If we use a consultant, it'd be less if we had staff able to actually do it themselves. Again, the total cost of this program is fifty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. GDOT will provide eighty percent funding and the county will be responsible for twenty percent matching funds, which is ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-three cents, which will come out of general funds. So again, we're just trying to use the systems we have, the technology, and try to improve safety and efficiency.
Will this force slow traffic in the left lane over to the right lane?
It can do a lot, I believe. That's not one of the facets programmed at this time. But again, I will just say the technology itself is growing, expanding. You know, vehicle manufacturers are installing this in their vehicles. I know Ford has made a big commitment to install this technology in theirs. And it's going to, it's going to come to all vehicles in the future. You know, consumers are going to demand it. So again, this is the wave of the future. And it's a good thing in terms of safety. Again, I think there's in Florida, I believe in Hillsborough County, they had used this technology like on their, like some off-ramps. And they'd actually noted thirteen different instances where this technology was used for people going in the wrong direction. So again, it's, it's very helpful.
George, where's the locations again?
It's going to be on Bill Carruth Parkway, the county maintained traffic signals. So starting from the east, it would be at Rosedale, Bill Carruth, Angum, Bill Carruth, Arnold, Bill Carruth, ninety-two, Bill Carruth, Nebo, Bill Carruth, Hiram Sudie, Bill Carruth, and Verge Valentine, Bill Carruth.
Thank you.
And this is the first one of these systems in the county, right, George?
That is correct. It'd be the first one. I believe GDOT is looking at installing a system on there, maintain traffic signals on two seventy-eight, probably starting at the Cobb Line and going to the west. But yes, this would be the first one in the county.
Is this a precursor to driverless cars? Also, three years ago, I was able to drive, ride in a driverless car. There was a driver in there just to watch. But they had these signals on all the traffic lights. So...
Yeah, again, I would say it's all part of that. It's called I T S, Intelligent Transportation Systems. It's all part of that technology, essentially, just trying to make our roads safer and more efficient. Again, it's part of that big umbrella of things. But I remember a couple of years ago, I was traveling down two seventy-eight out in Yorkville area. And I'm coming up on a vehicle and I'm like, there's nobody driving that vehicle. And I, you know, go up ahead of them and I stop and wait for them to come by. And I'm like, yeah, there was nobody driving that vehicle. It was actually, it was a driverless vehicle.
Doesn't Julie say yours are driverless when you're driving? Hi, Julie. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, George. That's the conclusion of our regular, our regular business. And no one has signed up to sign on, to speak on non-agenda items. Would any of the commissioners like to announce anything or celebrate anything? Let's don't forget our veterans on Thursday. There will be a lighting of a veteran's tree. Last year, we planted a veteran's tree and it's right by the walkway, about thirty feet from the monument, the Veterans' Monument. And it's lit up with all blue lights. So I consider it kind of an expansion of a veteran's tree to a law enforcement tree because of the blue lights. And they'll be on all the way through December thirty-first. So we're going to do a video on it tomorrow evening. You're welcome to come to the live lighting, but it'll also be shown on video.
Mr. Chairman, that will be at six fifteen. Is that correct, Rebecca? Six fifteen tomorrow night. There'll be a lighting and a couple of speakers.
We have a segment on honoring the Pauling County veterans. And we're going to play that right now.
So last year, we were thinking of a way to honor our veterans that currently work for the county and their families. So we sort of put our heads together and came up with the idea of a Veterans' Wall in the H R department.
So we had family members, current employees submit pictures and their rank and the branch of the military that they served in. So we've posted their picture up on the wall and then we've put a little star that says that information. So when citizens and other employees come in, they can look at the wall.
This year, the wall has really grown. I feel that more employees participated this year. They've submitted a lot of photos of themselves and their family members. So it's really neat just to see how many veterans we have here currently working with Pauling County and their families, too.
Yeah, the size of the wall has increased. It's actually doubled. The citizens have enjoyed coming in and taking a look at it. Employees have enjoyed coming in and taking a look at it. So it's just been a wonderful tribute to our veterans.
Hello, everyone, friends, Pauling Countyans. It's good to share with you today what Veterans' Day means to me. As a veteran myself and having worked with many military folks over the years, I'm proud that we have the opportunity to serve our country and now to serve our county. We have ninety-plus veterans in Pauling County employees, as described to me by our Human Resources Department. And I never knew we had that many. This is kind of our first year where we've wanted to quantify that and find out where they, where they are and where they work. So just happy Veterans' Day to all the veterans and happy Veterans' Day coming up shortly for all Americans.
Thank you for putting that together, Public Information Team led by Jeff Harkins. Great job. That is the conclusion of our, of everything. We do have a need to go into executive session for real estate. And I'll entertain a motion at this time that we do that.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate.
Have a motion as our second. Motion by Mr. Kaker, second, by Mr. Dunn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carries five zero. We're adjourned to executive session. Thanks again, y'all, for being here today. Thanks again y'all for being here today.
Executive session is complete. I'll reconvene the regular session and ask if there's any new business to address.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add as a new business item to the agenda, to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract on behalf of the county for the agreed price of $18,000 per acre. I'm sorry, for the acquisition of the Monk properties on Cochrane Road at the agreed price of $18,000 per acre. Property consisting of approximately 75 acres to be used for the Richland Creek Reservoir watershed protection and green space for outdoor activities. Parcel ID number 016.3.2.001.000
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Dunn and request a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of putting this on the new business for the afternoon meeting say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed to that? No opposition. The vote carries five zero. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote carries five zero. We stand adjourned.